Beautiful, everybody. You're doing things. You wanted everybody to be here on anything after today. He is wearing these green things.
We're riding.
Yeah. I said, those guys have got beautiful hair.
Yeah.
So that's cute, too. Pretty cute, guys.
Are there any patrons who wish to address the board regarding the tax rate? Seeing no one, then the tax rate hearing is now closed. All right. And if everyone would stand out for the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi. The approval of the agenda. The board approved the agenda as presented.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Mr. Ackerman, honoring excellence time. We are back.
We're back, yeah. We have some great, great things to share tonight, some celebrations, and a special video premiere. We always like those premieres. But we first want to start with a student that we wanted to recognize tonight, had a chance to connect with him just a moment ago. Kale Christopher, if you could come forward here and join me here at the podium. Some of you, I think, may be connected with Kale or know of his story, and I think Ms. Sullivan might even add to it a little bit later on. But this was first brought to our attention right after the first of the school year by our fine arts director, Erin Money. Kale did yard work over the summer and earned $700, right? And rather than keeping this money for himself, which I think would be totally understandable, he instead presented the money to Discovery Middle School band teacher Theresa Brier along with a flower bouquet. How about that? On the first day of school. Now, I was told his parents tried to maybe talk him into keep at least a little bit of that money for yourself, but he insisted on donating it all. Kale and Ms. Brier, Ms. Brier's here? There she is. Thanks for being here. Also, DMS principal, Dr. Greg Meese, is here as well, and we appreciate them being here. At last check, they've yet to talk about how the money's going to be spent, but one idea is possibly having a piece commissioned, which would involve bringing in a composer and have them work with Kale to choose a theme for the piece and possible feature the French horn, which happens to be his instrument in the band. So still, still a work in progress, but what a great story, and we thought this was definitely worthy of recognition. So Kale, this is not worth $700, but congratulations. Great job. Let's give him a round of applause. Mr. Norman Ralph, come forward, sir. Many of you had a chance to see Norman on, that was about a month ago, at our staff kickoff event, and we don't have many opportunities to celebrate someone for 40 years of service in our district. Our longtime technology director, Trey Kotsar, he sent me a, Trey's normally kind of short on words, but he got a little lengthy in these remarks when he talked about Norman. Norman has always been very instrumental with technology in the district. Even before there was an official technology department, he helped set up the district's first computers and network and did all the troubleshooting. Eventually, Norman moved over into the technology department full-time, where he was a jack-of-all-trades. He helped manage the network program and manage databases, internet connectivity, phones, repairs, and pretty much anything technology-related. When I started working with Norman, I immediately recognized how talented he is. Norman has the ability to look at a technical drawing or schematic, once set it to the side, and complete the project. Not only is Norman well-versed in networks, operating systems, servers, and device repairs, he can also help you with electrical, plumbing, HVAC, car repairs. Again, he's a jack-of-all-trades, and I need to probably have you come over to my house because I am not. I can confirm, and many, I think, in this room probably can confirm, but along with Norman's most likely photographic memory, his memory and knowledge of the district has proven invaluable on numerous occasions. He has the ability to remember specific details about building renovations, where things like cables used to be located, and why certain things were done the way they were. I've truly enjoyed working with Norman over the years, and I appreciate all that he has done for Liberty Public Schools. He is truly a very special employee. So again, it was great to recognize you in front of all of our staff last month, but we thought it was deserving to have you come in here and receive some additional recognition. Let's give Norman Ralph a big round of applause. We also need to acknowledge Norman's wife. Marina is here. Thank you so much for being here as well, of course, Trey. We have Kurt Laven from technology. I know those two have been close over the years. Appreciate you being here as well. We are going to close things out, and this actually really, the timing was great. We went to Kelly Brook yesterday and shot a video. With the start of every new school year, it brings out amazing stories. Want to thank Kaylee Burrell over at Kelly Brook for bringing this one to our attention. I'll just give you a couple of sentence descriptor to kind of tease this, but the video premiere that we are about to share with you is a true full-circle moment for Ms. Leslie Paredes Nunez and Mrs. Irene Saboda. These two were reunited at the Kelly Brook Elementary Staff Free Service Professional Development in August, as they both now teach at Kelly Brook. The story, though, begins years ago, as Mrs. Saboda was actually Leslie's ELL teacher at Manor Hill as early as when she arrived at Liberty Public Schools as a kindergartner. Let's take a look.
So I had been a teacher, starting in the '90s, and then stayed home with my boys. And then, as my boys grew, I decided to get back into full-time teaching. Liberty was looking for Spanish teachers, and then this position popped up, English Language Learning Teacher, and I was like, okay! I started at Manor Hill, and that was 18 years ago. In kindergarten, I went to Manor Hill because of the ELL program. And so I was there with Mrs. Saboda way back in kindergarten. So I remember Leslie as one of my ELL learners back at Manor Hill. I remember that she was always attentive, she was kind, she wanted to learn, she was eager, she had parents who were supportive. English being a second language for me, just having that support, she always made it so fun and inviting, and she was always super like the energetic type teacher. She works one-on-one with people, and she wants to be there for the students and just help them out succeed and see them where they go in the future. I wanted to be a chemistry teacher just because of Jessica Williams, who's over there at Liberty Public Schools. Before my first semester of college, I changed it to elementary education just because I wanted to work with the younger students. Well, I had no idea that she was interested in education. She was one of the Grow Your Own participants, the Grow Your Own Teacher Program. My class, we were kind of like the guinea pigs in a way, just because it was something so brand-new. They offered like scholarships for college, but not only that, just knowing that you had a job coming back to Liberty Public Schools. We were at our first Welcome Back to School staff meeting, and I just gave her a big hug. And I just started to know how much I loved her and how much I was proud of her. And she like turned around and hugged me, and she's like, oh my gosh, hi, Leslie! And she was like, I'm so excited, I'm so proud of you, and just kind of gave me like a flashback of like why I'm doing this, just so in the future I have some of those students as well come back or even just seeing them grow. I've worked with a variety of students over the years, and when you're in elementary, you don't, you kind of lose that contact with them. When they go to high school and they have nature, I really hadn't any knowledge that I had made an impact. I think she had like that huge impact towards me, just because she was one of the first people who like taught me the lotion, and also she's always been there for me. You know, as a teacher, you have a strong like impact towards students for the future, and she definitely had one of those impacts for me. And even then, I think that was just very emotional, because I'm like, oh my gosh, we're doing this together now, and not only I was a student teacher, but we're like colleagues now. It makes me happy, because I'm like, okay, so it's my turn to teach all of the other students like Ms. Sullivan did.
Truly, the best part of our job is to be able to get out and meet and hear these stories, and they both did an awesome job. And again, that is the premiere, as we're going to share that with them here this evening, and then, of course, get to share that with our community later this week in our various platforms. So with that, again, congratulations to Kale and Norman, and we'll look forward to presenting more great stories and recognitions next month.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. We typically take a short break to mingle among the audience and congratulate those of you who are here and being honored, as well as to say hello. So we will resume at seven, I'm just going to round it to 7:20. So we will resume at seven, I'm just going to round it to seven twenty. All right, we're back. We do have a card for public comments, so I will read my little paragraph. Speakers may address any subject concerning liberty, public schools and/or education. Board members will not engage in debates or discussions with those speaking other than to seek clarification of their comments. Speakers will address the board from the podium, are asked to keep remarks concise and to the point, and will not repeat what someone before has said. A person or persons may speak only once at the meeting. If several patrons wish to speak on the same topic, the board president may restrict the input to one or two spokespersons. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Profane language or comments that constitute a threat to the safety of others is prohibited. Spontaneous comments from the audience will not be tolerated. It may close public comment in the event of, in this, in the event, board members agree the normal flow of business is being unnecessarily delayed. They may by majority vote, waive, or end public comment. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, usually within a week. So I have one card, Amir Atia, if you would come up and address the board.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Amir Atia, and I attend South Valley Middle School. I would like to address a big concern with me and many other students. School shootings, they have been a thing since at least the 2000s. And unfortunately, they aren't going to go away statistically speaking. This is a grave issue. It makes it very stressful trying to make sure the students and staff of our schools are safe from school shootings. When there are thousands of students present across all of our schools, not knowing if one is carrying a gun or not. So I had an idea to help fix this or at least drastically decrease this from happening in the future. And you could add dense metal detectors. This, I feel like is smart, simple, useful, and is an absolutely, absolutely critical safety feature. I mean, I know this school gets a lot of funding considering it's one of the top schools in Missouri. I'm assuming it wouldn't be too hard to convince parents and taxpayers to go in on getting dense metal detectors. Since it's their kids that would be in danger if anything happened. So why wait for something bad to eventually happen to one of our schools? Dense metal detectors would eliminate or drastically reduce the chances of something like this happening. This year, two school shootings occurred within 25 miles of South Valley Middle School where I attend. Both incidents took place in Missouri in 2024 this year. Nationwide, there have been 139 incidents of gunfire on school grounds, leading to 42 deaths and 92 injuries. If you think about it, that's a school shooting every two days nationwide. This information can be verified using the source provided, everytownresearch.org. You guys have a lot of responsibility. I read on your website that you have 12,000 students attending your schools. What is going to stop one of them from having a bad day or being frustrated and deciding to take it out and bring a gun to school? The guards are good for neutralizing the school, for neutralizing the threat after the shooting. But what about preventing it in the first place? Dense metal detectors are what we are missing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, on to the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, RALIT's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member.
Remove the board approved consent agenda items 4.1 through 4.7.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we're on to reports from administration.
Yeah, good evening. 5.1 is our innovation and learning report, and we'll welcome Dr. Moore to the podium.
Good evening. Hi. Hi. It has been a busy month in innovation and learning. We have kicked off our work, as you may recall, we spent a lot of time this summer really refocusing in on what professional learning communities look like. And so we were able to kick off our early release Wednesdays, which is really a part of that time, that collaboration time, where teachers and administrators can come together and focus in on our students, looking at data and thinking about what we do with the students who already know it and the students who don't know it, and really supporting both of those students. So those have kicked off. We met with principals today, had a great meeting, and really reflected on how those have, how that time has started throughout the year. And then they have a lot of time to really collaborate with each other and kind of steal ideas, which is wonderful. And we want to also just thank you for that opportunity to have that time because it is valuable for our teachers. A few highlights from our board report. This has been shared throughout the years, and Dr. Sehorn has mentioned about eighth grade college visits. Ms. Jones and Andrea Snyder have really worked on that this year to make those continue once the Kaufman grant money was no longer available. But those will start on October 8th. The board report does share where they are going. But October 8th and October 10th are kicking off of two of our middle schools. And then the other two schools will be later in October. On September 20th, we are sending out two parent MAP and EOC scores. So the state was ready for us to share that, schools have that, and we'll be sending that out. I did want to note one correction in the report. It talked about IT Ready being this week, and it was actually last week. It ended last week. And so now we're actually taking that information and looking at the scores and seeing how our students did. We'll spend time on Wednesdays really honing in on our students, looking at who K8s, two grade levels below, so we can develop reading success plans for those students. But more to come on that. Several reports this month from innovation and learning. I will not go through all of those, and hopefully you do not have questions about all of those. Nick? Just kidding. But our awesome innovation and learning team is here, and I want to say thank you to them because they really helped kind of work on those with our principals and directors. I did want to just talk about the back to school annual report, and specifically the building improvement plans. There was a link on there to a PDF that really just talked about, that just shows the main page. This Friday, I will send out the actual document that have all of the tabs. So if you want to kind of dig in more, you can see that. But hopefully, this document looks familiar to you, very similar to our strategic plan. And if you, the vision statements, the vision area, the vision statements, and the deliverables are all the same. So they took those straight from the strategic plan. What is different is the project title. So each school was able to choose which deliver, or which vision statement they wanted to do. And then they decided on the project title based on their school needs. So as you look through, your, every school has a goal that's focused on belonging, and that's the work with Dr. Sehorn that she's been doing for the last few years. And then every school has teaching and learning goals that might be focused on instructional practices, strategies. It might be focused on MTSF. We have some great real world learning goals in there as well, but I just wanted to highlight that. Also wanted to share that, I didn't put it on this document just so that I could get it on one page. But there are two columns that are hidden. One of those is the monthly, or the help checks. Dr. Tucker has spoken to this at SLT every two weeks. We go through and we talk about where we are, and then we, we give a health check, just like if we're making progress on that goal. And so the buildings will have that as well. They'll do that on a monthly basis. And then when they meet with Dr. Wilson and Dr. Van Batavia for data consult three times a year, they'll also do a health check just to make sure that if there's ways that we can support them, that we will do that. That was a lot, but that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Well, one, I love the first pages as always. They're my favorite part, but I really appreciate it. And I may not have paid close enough attention to this in the past, but I liked having in the athletic one, all of the highlights of the last year. Because while we get them month to month, you kind of forget the time element. And so there was a lot of things that we celebrated, I know, last year.
A lot of both feeders.
Early childhood. And so there was a lot of things that we celebrated, I know, last year.
A lot of both feeders.
Early childhood. My thoughts go out to them and my congratulations. I mean, I, I don't know if you guys understand how much time an evaluation in special education takes. I do. 230 of those in a year is an amazing amount of work. And the amount of students, I mean, they were pretty much on target.
Yes.
And so my congratulations to that staff for getting through that and the IEPs. I mean, that, that's impressive.
They've also been working really hard at the end of last year and throughout the summer to try to get students enrolled quicker. And as Dr. Tucker has said many times, they start out around, you know, 200, 220, and then they may grow up to 400. They've really been diligent about trying to get that number up higher sooner so that we can serve family needs. So they had some staff who were willing to take on that extra time. So that's what they've been doing, what they did over the summer, and they're doing it now as well, just to try to get students in faster.
They have a great staff.
They do.
And I'm not saying the other buildings don't. I just, that's, that's a lot of work. So kudos to them. But I did, I did appreciate all of the copious amount of information.
There's a lot.
Unlike Nick, I don't have any questions. But you know, I think the, just to echo that, I mean, the college and career readiness stuff, I mean, going through and seeing the business partners that are partnering on internship opportunities, all the opportunities.
Oh my gosh, there's so many.
That students have, I mean, it's, there's a lot of information there, but I would really encourage people to look at all of those reports because they're, they're great.
Thank you. We have a lot going on, a lot to celebrate.
Well, and Dr. Moore, I appreciate you going and sharing more in depth about the building improvement plans. I think a question I had had was about, you know, we set these goals at the beginning of the year, and then what does it look like at the end of the year? When we get, look at these goals again, how do we measure success? And how do we, how do we evaluate that? And to hear from you that, well, it's really not just setting a goal at the beginning of the year and then looking at it again at the end, that we're supporting throughout the year, that we are having these regular check-ins, both through Strategic Leadership Team and then with, at the building. I think that's important for people to see that, that we are, we are managing that along the way. And I think that's really reassuring.
A lot of collaboration, and that's what they asked for at the end of last year. They said, we just want time to collaborate and kind of steal from each other. So we are committed to giving them that time when we're all together to, so that they can achieve their goals.
Does the dropout rate, I can't find it right now, falls under innovations? The dropout rate that I read, is that at another location?
That is part of, that would be part of our score card and some of the information that we share, so working on that.
If I read it right, ninth graders are the most at high risk. And that's good information, and also monitoring and so forth. One of the things that brought a question to mind is outside resources. And one listed was DYS, Division of Youth Services. Would they play, did I read it wrong? Did they, would they play a role in that?
No, they, they do definitely support.
So would a child end up being referred to them, like as a charge, or how would it work?
That, well, that does happen in the event if we have a student who would drop out before the age of 17. We, we usually would hotline that because of the age.
Because they're violating the law.
And so that it's a conversation which they're great people to partner with to say like, what supports do you need? And if you can't get to school, can we do online learning? What are some other options that we can do to help support the student?
So.
That sometimes gives a little extra push.
Okay. I've worked with those agencies. So the likelihood of them ending up in a placement is not very likely, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of Dr. Moore?
All right, middle school athletics. It's primarily eighth grade, right? Seventh grade is limited in participation?
Correct.
And is that a function of, well, I'll ask, what is the function of?
Not having seventh grade?
Yeah.
Facilities? It is also just, we've had this conversation many times. We've talked about it, we've talked about it, you know, two of our schools that are a little bit smaller, do you kind of bring them in? We've talked about combining. There are just several conversations. I would say part of it is honestly like finding, making sure you have the student athletes, and then making sure you have coaches, and then making sure that it aligns with the vision that moves into high school. And we want to make sure that those high school head coaches are a part of those conversations. So we've had many conversations, but not necessarily with them. So Dr. Tucker and I have talked with the high school ADs and have said, you know, we need to bring them into the conversation, that if it's best to have a seventh grade program, what would that look like? But it's also, it's difficult because at, right now, at South Valley and Heritage, they could have probably seventh grade football teams, and they could have their own football team. But when you have the two other schools that are a little bit smaller, it would be harder to do that. And then also to find coaches, and then to find the facilities to do that. So it's just making sure that kind of all the stars align with that.
It would be, again, this is one offs that I hear from parents, so I don't know if it's prevalent or not. But I think it would be interesting to understand, is there demand from a student side for seventh grade? And I know it's not going to be all of them, right? We've got a great breadth of opportunities in middle school. But it may be interesting just to understand where the, where the demand for seventh grade would be. Then I get it, we've got to figure out all of the logistics behind it.
And that was part of the discussion earlier last year around the data. So much so that we went into Mish's site and pulled rosters to be able to compare every sport, male, female, across each middle school to do that comparison. It also provides visibility to size. So we've done some of that.
Yeah.
The other piece too is ensuring that while a couple of middle schools may advocate for something, you also want to provide that opportunity across all middle schools.
That's right.
So I think it's a matter of when might we do that? I think it's coming. It's just ensuring that all of those pieces, to Julie's point earlier, is aligned.
Yep.
I would add that with the smaller schools like LMNS, you know, last year we had to look at seventh grade for basketball. And then this year, when volleyball and cheer started, you know, they said, I, we think we're going to have to go to seventh grade. And Jason Cahill was great about, he said, I need you to go into classes, I need you to talk to eighth graders, you need to promote it. And sure enough, there were kids who were like, oh, wait, I can, I can go play volleyball, or I could, I can try out for cheer. Like they didn't think it was a, maybe it was possible before, maybe there was more competition. So we did get more eighth graders who were able to do it. And then in those situations, we didn't have to move it down to seventh grade. And then that way it was consistent across all four buildings.
Yeah.
Other questions of Dr. Moore? Thank you, Dr. Moore and team in the back for all of your efforts. Next then, 5.2 is our student equity and access report, and Dr. Andre Dixon Sehorn.
I told Dr. Moore she had a fan club back there. I just wanted to share a few things from the report that was submitted for this month. First of all, with regards to the building equity cadres, they are officially underway this month. So we had our first round last week, and then our second round of schools next week. So very excited about that. And again, those sessions are being facilitated by Dr. Nathan Hostetler. And again, this is really about just putting action, steps in place for those belonging goals that Dr. Moore has already alluded to that are written into the school improvement plans. And so these teams consist of our school leaders, classified, certified staff, and then also students. And so I did have an opportunity to attend most of them last week. And my favorite part, thank you, Madam President, was because of the student contribution to those conversations. It truly is a game changer. So more to come on that. Also, from student services, you may have seen in the board report a link to this flyer from Laffy. And so I do want to share this. Laffy, which is the Liberty Alliance for Youth, they're inviting any and everyone to participate in the Community Action Poverty Simulation. And it is an immersive. And it is an immersive activity that presents real life scenarios to replicate what life would be like living at or below the poverty line. It provides a glimpse into the structural barriers that people in poverty may face. So that is Wednesday, October the ninth, from ten a.m. until twelve thirty p.m. at Second Baptist Church. The event is free, space is limited, and so we're just encouraging as many of our team members here in Liberty Public Schools to sign up. And so Ms. Rebecca Bressman did send out a notification to all of our directors, academics, operations, just all across the organization to encourage them to participate if their schedules permit. And then lastly, the annual report for Student Services is included in this month's board report and contains highlights for the department and goals achieved for really twenty-three, twenty-four. So I would gladly take any questions at this time if there are any.
Is the Trauma Smart a new program that we're doing at the elementary level?
Now that you all have approved that this evening as part of Consent Agenda, it will be something new that we will be implementing this school year, yes, at the three schools, at three schools in particular, at the elementary level, yes.
I'm also so happy that Health Squad is coming.
Yes, we are too.
That is a phenomenal program.
Yes.
So.
Also, thank you for approving that via Consent Agenda items.
Well, we try. You can never fail. But it's a nice report from Rebecca on all of the things that she's been doing. Great charts though. I like charts because I can see things coming across. Some interesting points that I wasn't aware of with foster care and things like that that were surprising to me. So that, you know, you shouldn't have to move just because your placement changes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Looking at what's best for children.
Absolutely. Taking care of the whole child regardless of who they are, where they come from, whatever their circumstances may be. Absolutely.
Yeah. So, thank you though.
Other questions of Dr. Dixon Seawright?
Thank you.
Thank you. Five point three then, our Finance Report. Ms. Cindy Sullivan.
Good evening. I have three donations to recognize tonight. Excuse me. A donation of supplies valued at one thousand twenty-five dollars and ninety-one cents from Office Depot and Office Max to benefit the students and staff at Manor Hill Elementary. I think they're well supplied. A monetary donation of two thousand dollars from the Prashon Family Charitable Gift Fund to Shoal Creek Elementary. And one you've already heard about tonight, a monetary donation of six hundred and seventy dollars from Cale Christopher to the Discovery Middle School Band Program. I have the distinct honor to walk in on this happening on the first day of school. And when I walked into the office, I saw immediately that Dr. Mees was counting money on the counter. And so of course it's like, what's going on? I walked in and then immediately he told me what was going on and I had a really great conversation with Cale. And I said, you need to turn this in because we want to recognize you if not for this, but just this. But glad we could do honoring excellence for him too because it was just a great gesture. And he was so humble about it and I had a great conversation with him. So it was a great way for me to start my day at Discovery Middle School on the first day of school, so.
Can I interject to you? She ran back to the office and made a beeline for our office to tell us the story.
Yeah, it was just a fun day. It started out really, really well. Couple other things to mention. Westbrook did wrap up fieldwork on Thursday of last week for our annual audit. The auditor did meet with the Audit and Finance Committee members in a closed session on Monday evening. And the final report will be presented to the Audit and Finance Committee in October and then to the Board of Education either in October or November when he gets his schedule worked out. So we look forward to have that. I would like to thank the Business Services Department and particularly Denise Aldrich for the massive amount of hard work that they do to make it work so well. Denise keeps us all in order and without that, we would just be pretty chaotic. So we do appreciate her very much. And then Jill Maloney specifically in Business Services does the bulk of the work in the back. So great people and hopefully you'll see that in the good results that we're going to expect in our audit. The AFC did review the financials and did not have anything to pass on to you this month. And we're just about to wrap up the year. It seems like the things are coming together a little bit quicker this year. We have only one FER, Final Expenditure Report, left to do for the ECS, and we're dependent upon DESI to open those up. But we just have a couple of other things to do after the audit is final and approved by you and we can close the books on FY twenty-four and start looking at FY twenty-six. And other than what's in my report, I don't have anything else for you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions with Mrs. Sullivan?
No, but I really would have liked to have been the fly on the wall at Discovery when you walked in that day.
It was fun.
Yeah, that's an amazing thing for a young man to do.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Very, very impressive.
Yeah, that and the flowers.
Yep, yeah, for sure.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five point four then, our Operations Report. Mr. Steve Inge.
Good evening. Just a few things I wanted to report tonight. Couple out of the reports that are uploaded. First of all, I did want to call out Kid Zone Program and Megan Lucian and her team. If you looked at some of her report and leaning into some of the strengths of other departments and especially instruction learning in helping train her team as they get ready for the start of the school year. And she has really put a lot of emphasis in that. And I think we see some of that kind of taking effect, those differences being made and just, her heart's into that part of it and has really been driving that program forward and with those connections. So really appreciate that. Also, one thing I just wanted to note, and one, a challenge that's kind of popped up for us here recently with the, all the great effort to enroll students in early, which has been a home run in every possible way. One of the challenges for us is for those families that registered early and they, if they fill out a free reduced application, the federal government makes everybody do that again as of July one. So that's just caused a little bit of a kind of ripple into that, which again, it's not, not a, you know, nothing we can't overcome. Appreciate Dr. Dixon Seawright and her team. We've been meeting to figure out how better to communicate that ahead of next year. But we may see a little bit of a dip there as we're kind of rolling into the year. And as a reminder, we're using that same data to kind of tie into Kid Zone enrollment, reduction in rates for there, also for devices and insurance. And it kind of ties into a lot of the areas that are pretty important though. So just wanted to kind of mention that, that that's something that we're working through. Also mentioned in there is we put a RFQ out. It's out on the street right now. We're soliciting proposals or qualifications for work related to performance contract. We've done that before here. It's probably been about twelve, thirteen, maybe even more years ago. And that's to engage with an engineering firm and help us look at all of our systems, primarily roof systems and HVAC systems, and taking a, they'll start by doing an audit. And then we're pretty much going to commit to that. The next round of that is actually engaging them to help us tackle how to finance and fund some more significant work. And clearly, that's something, you know, a district of our size, we have two million square feet. All the buildings we have and aging systems, they just, for whatever reason, they keep getting older and older on us, which requires more and more time and investment. But, and then also just for a little bit of perspective, you know, we had a little over fifteen million dollars with this last bond. So about fifteen percent of the bond was, went specifically into HVAC improvements. And we're making some really good headway there. But like one example, next summer, we have Donovan coming up for that school. It's about six and a half million dollars to redo the HVAC system there. It's just a lot of money. So we have to get a little creative. We'll certainly be bringing that back to you guys over time. But it's just part of, one of the bigger challenges that we really face in that department. And then last, just a quick bond update, just real quick. Everything is still kind of on schedule. And now's a good time if you're out and about, both the distribution center, Ethic of course, behind South Valley and Discovery. You're seeing everything start going vertical, which is always exciting. But everybody's feeling really good about where everything is at and on schedule. So this, getting everything kind of sealed up for winter as we turn into spring will be pivotal, but we feel like that's all in good shape. And then again, as a reminder, we're getting ready to let out bids for Phase Two of Heritage, Phase Two of Liberty High, which will be the two bigger projects that kind of bleed all the way into this time next year. So all that continues on. So that's all I have. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Anderson, I'll double down on the Kid Zone piece. I think, we've been a family within Kid Zone for about nine years now. And we have seen the evolution over time for more engaging activities. And I know that's a tough, that is a tough go to have kids who've been in school all day and then all of a sudden aftercare certainly to keep them engaged. My youngest, this will be his last year, is consistently telling me he wants to stay at Kid Zone. And for me, that is just indicative of the transformation that has happened over time with that whole organization and how they've truly taken on more of a, how do we help engage kids as opposed to how do we just manage kids after school, right? And that's just a very different mindset that I've seen happen over time. It's very much appreciated. So kudos to the team.
Have them apply when you hit sixteen.
Yeah, I'm sure they would. I'm sure they would.
I just wanted to thank you for the efforts and your team on facilities for the HVAC issues. We have received some questions and concerns and so hearing that there is an understanding and that there's a process and that we're thinking about this from a big picture standpoint of not just fixing things here and there, but really trying to space out what are very significant and expensive investments in buildings that are aging. I mean, I think it's important. I think that it's important for people to hear that. And I appreciate you sharing that this evening and taking the time to follow up on specific questions that come as they do with that service mindset that you have and your team has. And then I also wanted to shout out Transportation because they have been, I noticed in their report that they added quite a few people, even though you did a very good job messaging, get, sign up, opt in for bus, that you did have a lot of people opt in on those first couple of days of school and it seemed like you got it all integrated and that's good. And then just a personal thanks for my very forgetful child that leaves things on the bus and manages to. They have, I appreciate the Transportation team's ability to capture items, maintain them, and get them back to students.
Austin Gepound. Thanks, Mr. Anderson.
Thanks.
Next then, five point five, Human Resources. Dr. Sarah Marriott.
Good evening. Start with representatives from Holmes Murphy, our district insurance broker, who are here this evening and will share information in just a moment, presented our health insurance utilization options for the 2025 benefits to Team Liberty on August the twenty-seventh and then again on September the fifth. We have Team Liberty landed on a proposal regarding LPS employee benefits packages for 2025. And the recommendation has been shared and we will respectfully request the Board of Education to act on final contracts at the October Board of Education meeting. And then once the board approves those 2025 employee benefits, our HR team will provide in-person and virtual benefit information sessions to educate our staff on the benefits and changes for 2025. And our employees will continue to be able to access a tool called Alex, which helps them select an appropriate insurance plan for their particular needs. So open enrollment will start October the twenty-third through November the fifth for the 2025 enrollment period, which will be effective January first. We've had a hundred and twenty new classified employees join the LPS team since July first. One component that we have utilized to help recruit candidates is the Transportation Ambassador Program, and that's been quite successful. We have started with four employees who are transportation ambassadors and we hope to expand that program to other departments in need over time. Additional pieces regarding marketing, we've launched a new landing page for careers, which will help us track analytics. We have engaged with Dallas as well as Corey Thomason for some videos for recruitment. We are also using Google Display and Meta Ads as well as creating a lot of new marketing materials such as banners, yard signs, flyers, et cetera, to get the information out to our community. And then last week, our LPS Aspiring Classified Team Leadership Academy application opened. We have received sixty-six applications from classified team members to participate and we will select twenty-two for this first cohort. And the first cohort meeting is scheduled for September the twenty-sixth. I'll take any questions.
Not a lot of work. Thank you for.
Nothing. Got a great team.
Thanks, Dr. Marriott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly then, Superintendent's Report. Couple of highlights to mention. Do want to give credit to the Communications Department and Dallas and his team for kicking off as the school year began a couple of communication series we've done in years past. But that is our In the Loop with LPS podcast, along with Coffee with the Community. So those series are ongoing. As we start the school year, you'll see a variety of topics and individuals interviewed as well as presenting over the course of the coming months during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. In addition to the start of the year, we have some structures that are reconvening as far as committees and groups, one being Strategic Leadership Team, which meets every other week to provide an update or report out on our twenty-seven strategic plan areas of focus. In addition to them, our District Leadership Team meets monthly. We had our meeting for the month of September just a few days ago and are walking through the design or development of a learning ecosystem and what that looks like from a variety of points of views or points of interaction within our system, be it from a student, from a parent, from a community member, from a leader, all the way through our entire employee staff. So we'll be working on that over the course of this year as well. A quick update on Success Ready Students Network. You will recall at our study session in early September, we shared with you a draft dashboard that then connects to the measures that are part of the Success Ready Students Network effort over the course of these last couple of years. We intend for that to be live at the end of this month. And so in advance of that, we'll be sharing some messaging and some communication to our families and our staff so that they can have kind of a preview of what that will look like as it's turned on. An important thing to note is that the first round of districts that were part of the first innovation waiver are those districts that will be incorporating a dashboard into their systems. This is a precursor to an alternative annual performance report that we're working on through cooperation with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Along with that comes the Continuous Improvement Framework, which we'll be talking to you a little bit about later on as far as what are those additional indicators that need to be incorporated into strategic plans? We have many of those incorporated already, but as districts enter this work for the first time, it might be something new that they're incorporating into their CSIPS or into their strategic plans. Last thing that I would mention regarding Success Ready Student Network and the collaboration with DESI is that we learned right after our study session, we had shared with you what our next steps were as far as hearing from the U.S. Department of Education concerning a competitive grant for student assessment, for state assessment, that's the CGSA grant. We learned right after we shared that information with you that Missouri had in fact been awarded just under a million dollars to be able to design, pilot, and implement a new assessment model, our new assessment system. So we're working with DESI after that announcement. That then will result in the submission of an innovation waiver referenced as the IADA, Innovative Assessment Demonstration Authority. So a lot of work to be done between now and that submission in hopes that we will be allowed that opportunity to rethink and reimagine assessment and accountability, which then falls in line with the work that we've been doing these last few years with the Success Ready Students Network. With that said, would certainly open it up for any questions you all have of me this evening.
That's just exciting.
More to come, for sure.
All right, on to new business.
Earlier this evening, we held our tax rate hearing. And so this is the portion of our meeting where we incorporated into our new business. So item six point one is the setting of our 2024, 2025 tax rate. We'll turn it over to Ms. Cindy Sullivan.
Thank you. Based on the State Auditor Office calculations, we are bringing you a recommendation tonight to set our tax levy. We are recommending that we set the 2024 operating levy at four dollars and fifty-two cents, the debt service at a dollar four point seven seven cents and thirty-six cents in the capital projects. The total levy recommendation for the 2425 fiscal year is five dollars ninety-two point seven seven cents, which is exactly. which is exactly the same levy as we had for the previous year. Our 2024 assessed valuation represents an estimated net increase of two point four three five nine percent when compared to the assessed valuation from September of 2023. The total assessed value for the Liberty Fifty-Three School District on which current taxes are collected is one billion, seven hundred, twenty-seven million, eight hundred, five thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Forty-four million of that is new construction. So, that's what we are recommending tonight, that you set the levy at for this coming school year.
Any questions?
I move the Board set the 2024, 2025 tax rate at five dollars, ninety-two point seven seven cents.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Item six point two then, as far as our insurance and benefits utilization plan. Dr. Marriott mentioned much of this earlier in her report. We do want to thank Team Liberty for the work that they've done already this year, specifically honing in on this topic, which we know is integral for the quality of life of our employees across our district. You have a recommendation that's been uploaded. You have the next month to be able to ask any questions that you might have and provide some clarification if need be, we can chase that down for you. Once we come to the October fifteenth meeting, it'll be presented as an action item. Any changes or any modifications will be clarified for you. That then gets us into that open enrollment window as was mentioned. And so, you have several documents that are uploaded for you this evening, but we're going to welcome Holmes Murphy to the podium to kind of walk us through some slides that they've prepared. So, Matt Wheeler is no stranger to us, he's worked with us quite a bit over the years, both with Ms. Sullivan and Dr. Marriott, previously Dr. Vogelar, Team Liberty members, to be able to support us through those broker services. So, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. I see a couple of Team Liberty members in the room, so as always, I just want to give kudos to them and all their peers for the deliberation that goes into these decisions. They always do a fabulous and conscientious job of weighing the decisions ahead of them, not only in light of their personal use of the healthcare plan and the benefits, but more importantly, their peers and how it impacts them and all of their disparate situations. So, really my role tonight is just simply to give a little context for the renewal itself and a little bit of context for the Team Liberty recommendation that is in front of you. I'll be brief in the comments, but certainly if you have any questions as we go through, feel free to stop me or I'll answer them at the end. We'll briefly talk about all the lines of coverage here at the district. Only some of them were up for renewal this year, so we'll talk about those. Want to provide some broad macro context for the renewal itself as well as some specific utilization around the Liberty Plan itself here at the district and how it impacted the renewal. And then walk through the recommendations from Team Liberty. This slide is just a summary of all the lines and coverage that are provided to employees and their families here at the district. You can see on the far right-hand side of this that most of these lines of coverage were under rate guarantee for the 2025 plan year. There were some enhancements on life insurance that we'll talk about as well as the ID theft program, which added some cybersecurity at no additional cost. There's going to be a change in the EAP provider. That program was facing an increase as it was. Ultimately, there's a new vendor that has been put in place, which the thought process is there's going to be enhanced services for employee assistance in place there. But as always, the main attraction was the medical renewal. So, we'll spend some time talking about that. In essence, where the renewal was progression came from is that when you looked at where the performance was, what the calculation from Blue KC was, it was a twenty-three percent position. Ultimately, in working with them, it landed and was released at ten point nine percent. Team Liberty made a number of decisions around plan designs to mitigate some payroll exposure. So, ultimately, the final blended increase was ten point one percent and was arrived at through some modest plan design decisions. So, we'll talk about those and what the team recommended as we move through the presentation here. From a macro standpoint, we just like to share with all of the employers that we talked to a lot of what's going on in the healthcare and pharmacy landscape. You certainly have specific circumstances around your plan that are influencing your renewal, but none of us are immune to what's happening in the broader healthcare landscape. We'll just do a couple of callouts because they're certainly impacting Liberty Public Schools' healthcare and pharmacy plan. There's just been an explosion in cost in specialty pharmacy drugs and GLP-1 drugs. It's providing a lot of benefit to the members covered on the plan. It also comes with some tremendous expense that influences some of the inflation we're going to talk about here on this slide. The other big thing here in Kansas City specific, it's been just really a sea change is the facility and hospital community has gone through a rash of mergers over the last twenty-four months. Certainly here in Liberty's backyard with Liberty Hospital and KU Med. There is also KU Med acquired Olathe Hospital System. The combination of all those things is putting pressure on facility pricing locally. So, when you add all of these other factors in there, there's a lot of inflationary pressures on medical and pharmacy costs and very few deflationary mechanisms. So, we're used to talking about inflation just overall in our economy. It's really at a high watermark right now in healthcare. So, it does make for some headwinds as you're working on renewals and trying to mitigate next year expenses. Just in a quick snapshot, just to kind of summarize where the plan is operating, if you just look at total premium paid by the district in at about sixteen point three million dollars over the last twelve months. And really, for every dollar that's paid in premium, it's been the reality for the last twenty-four months or so that there's more than a dollar going out the door in actual claims cost. So, working against that headwind when it comes to the renewal process has been a little bit of a challenge. Fortunately, I think that Blue Cross has done a good job of hedging what the premium ask is, betting on improvement in the future. And we'll talk about that, I think, on the next slide a little bit. This just gives a snapshot historically of where the actual utilization is for the district. The blue lines up and down represent the monthly claims volatility. The red line represents the claims that are looked at by the underwriting community that are trapped in your contract. And the horizontal green line is presently where your contract target is. So, you can see that the trailing twelve-month data is about ten percent over contract target where it sits in July. And so, when you think about how to forecast what's going to happen in 2025, it's really a two-step process, adjust it back to contract, which is ten percent, and then add inflation. And when you add those two numbers together, it gets pretty ugly pretty quickly. It puts it up in the twenty percent range if Blue Cross was trying to capture back their full expenses, et cetera. Fortunately, that's not what has transpired. That's not the position that they've historically taken with Liberty Public Schools. So, ultimately, what the district is facing in 2025 was really about an inflationary adjustment to see if that premium adjustment in the claims can try to normalize here over the next twelve months. Pharmacy has been a special challenge for everyone, but particularly here at the district. This just looks at year-over-year cost exposure increase on the pharmacy component itself of the contract. Today, pharmacy expenses represent around thirty-five to forty cents on the dollar for every claim that's paid. If we go back simply ten years ago, the answer to that question was around ten cents on the dollar. So, a lot of the inflation and a lot of the interventions that have been developed are making a big difference in patients' lives, but they're also for a very small targeted audience, so they come with a big expense. So, if you look at a lot of the large claims that are driving the plan here at the district, it's tied to pharmacy. That's where it's located.
I mean, that seems out of the ordinary based on the benchmark down there, right? I mean, for us, I mean, are we outperforming?
Well, what's happening is that, so if you think about a benchmark, we've got folks that are down at the seventy-dollar level. There unfortunately, there's a lot of company in the two-hundred-plus level. It has everything to do with drug mix and the specific conditions that a particular drug is focused on. So, for instance, here at the district, if we look back to that slide where there was sixteen-plus million dollars in claims over the last twelve months, new arrivals on three specific drugs were responsible for one and a half million dollars of that. So, that's going to take this average outcome. If you just happen to have the right condition that a very targeted or orphaned drug is geared for, then it's going to drive up these benchmarks. The challenge with them is that there aren't alternatives. There's no generic, there isn't a competitor drug. Now, on that deflator slide, there is some small relief in 2025. Humira has been a blockbuster biologic drug forever. Finally, there's biosimilars available. Blue Cross is adopting a policy where that particular drug will be non-preferred. If somebody's electing to utilize that drug in 2025, they'd be paying the difference between the biosimilar. That's good. Stellara later in the year, and there's a handful of those here on the plan at Liberty Public Schools. Biosimilar will also come out in 2025. We'll have to wait and see how Optum and Blue Cross develop a strategy around that. That will probably go in in twenty-six. Those would be positive influencers here when those biosimilars come online. It just takes time to socialize it through. All the pipeline is in these very targeted and orphan-based drugs.
Sure.
So, there's been lots of discussion around, clearly, this type of trend line is not sustainable by anybody. The question is, is what's the most effective way to pool that? I've heard even, you know, the medical director for your care here say, can we get back to thinking about how we pool these expenses? So, it's almost a pre-ACA discussion, which I think would be a welcome, a welcome response from a lot of our clients because if you just happen to fall on the wrong side of, hey, we're glad that this application is here for our sick member, but you can go to your neighbor across the street and they might be right at the benchmark because they just don't have that utilization. It's driving a lot of, we'll say that we're dealing with a lot of unique circumstances right now to where twenty-three, like your forecast, for a lot of our customers is twenty-three. And they're just, the marketplace is saying, go ahead and respond if somebody else can give you a lower number. And the first time really ever in the KC marketplace, it's not happening. So, we're seeing a lot of twenty-plus increases in actuality, not just calculation. And that's a new development. So, the market is definitely hardened up and this is a big response and a reason why. Because these are repeatable expenses. It's not like I got sick and was hospitalized, I'm exited from the hospital, those expenses stop. These rinse and repeat. So, it's very hard to deal with that from a risk mechanism. From the Team Liberty recommendation standpoint, they're summarized here on the medical side of the equation. Ultimately, the recommendations that you've seen are that to accept the district subsidy increase, it's actually just shy of nine point one percent at seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars per employee per month is what the Liberty Public Schools subsidy would be overall from a district exposure standpoint. That's one point three million dollars year-over-year in increased spend. The team spent a lot of time just weighing upon what the increase would be or pit would be from a payroll standpoint if no plan design changes were made and that subsidy was just applied to the rate increases or some small combination of changes. It seemed it did a good job, did a job, just a good job just like last year of weighing what is most important, protecting payroll or protecting benefit? Is there a combination of both? Very similar to the process they embarked upon last year. They ultimately decided to make some modest changes on the non-high deductible health plans to mitigate payroll exposure. So, you can see a note there that really, from an employee-only payroll standpoint, the increases range from no cost on the HDHP to the most expensive plan at around thirteen dollars a month for an increase. The starting position before plan changes would have been in the twenty-three to twenty-four dollar range, so it mitigated about ten dollars of impact from a payroll standpoint per month. And down below, you can see that the changes that have been adopted, they're all modest from a dollar standpoint versus where they're positioned today. But there was a lot of deliberation on this specific line item. So, where it finished was not where it started and the team does a good job of pressure testing how that might impact one of their peers, could we mitigate it? Emergency room, for instance, was a line item discussion because today that copay is two hundred dollars. So, initially, it was contemplated at five hundred and the team really pressured that and said, and ultimately arrived at a different conclusion for what was the right pathway to approach. And then one other change that was adopted was to grandfather one of the five plan offerings. It's the zero-dollar EPO plan. Today, there are about fourteen percent of members on that plan. It's been around for a long time. Ultimately, the decision there was made because if you look at how that plan is operating today and how inflation has impacted it over time, for the premium cost that members are investing in that plan, there's not really a way to construe a win for the value they're getting for that plan versus other plans. So, the thought process here was just to grandfather it in twenty-five, see how that impacts enrollment and then reconsider it again in twenty-six. So, those that are on it can keep it if they'd like, it's just there would be no new enrollment on that particular plan option. And then finally, on these other lines of coverage, life insurance, there's just an enhancement. Right now, employees can only elect up to one times their basic annual earnings for voluntary life insurance they purchase. That will be increasing. They could buy two to three times their base annual earnings if they wanted to. That's going to come with an open enrollment to where they could receive up to a guarantee issue at one times their salary if they want to participate. That also enhanced the spouse and child coverage along that, increased the value of it. A pet insurance option is going to be offered. The HR team hears a lot about that. So, that's going to be added to the mix of products that members can buy. So, it makes it convenient to go ahead and make that purchase here. The ID theft we hit on, it's adding cybersecurity at no cost, so that's just enhancing the policy for those that have it. And then ultimately, the last one is CureLink, so that's switching out Optum for CureLink. It is an increase of six thousand dollars, but it does come with some enhanced benefits. And hopefully, in weighing its services, there's some thought process to deliver a lot more value than relative engagement today with Optum. So, in essence, that's a kind of a quick tour through Team Liberty's recommendations and how they weigh things.
Any questions while we have Holmes Murphy with us?
I know there's a lot of friction in the market, there's some negotiations with hospital networks. I assume the recommendation would certainly cover Libri as far as usage there. Are there hospital networks that would be excluded from this particular plan that they've selected?
So, the network that Liberty Public Schools is on is called Blue Select Plus with Blue Cross. It is their smaller or narrow network, if you want to refer to it as that. It was established when the ACA began. It includes North Kansas City, KU Med, Shawnee Mission Advent, Children's Mercy, and then affiliated providers, which is a good overlap here. That will obviously then begin to include, you know, Liberty Hospital, Liberty Hospital is already in it, so it will stay. As far as we know, yes, there is friction, like KCOI was a provider within Blue Cross that that got reconciled. That network is staying intact and as it is, at least for 2025. I think what our messaging is to the community now is that whatever rule of thumb existed in the past, you almost have to throw it out the window because you can just expect the unexpected. But for now, that network thankfully is staying intact. I think that these contracts renew on two and three-year cycles. Cigna had to just renew theirs this year with HCA. It was fairly publicly aired disagreement for how that ultimately got reconciled. I think we'll see more of that because there's a lot of friction in how to get these contracts done. Hopefully, we maintain network integrity. This network that the district is on has been a very positive medical cost filter. We hope it remains and certainly will for twenty-five. We'll see what happens as the contracts start to renew themselves and how pricing effectiveness stays.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Does St. Luke's part of that network?
St. Luke's is not, so.
I didn't think so, but.
Yeah. They were certainly in the line of St. Luke's and Barnes Jewish out of St. Louis emerged. So, I mean, there's a common theme here, right? All of the hospitals are combining membership. So, presumably, it's for clinical purposes and for negotiation purposes as they're looking back to the marketplace and pricing for services. So, Kansas City used to be a relatively independent town, but just like every other industry, that's had a lot of consolidation. So, North Kansas City Hospital is one of the lone independents standing. So, it's been definitely a sea change locally here in KC.
Anything else, anything to add, Dr. Marriott or Ms. Sullivan?
Other than thinking Team Liberty, they force invasion and break discussions as they do on an annual basis. They are very mindful, as Matt shared, of the impact on the entire team rather than individuals. So, I appreciate their consistency and their attention to that. individuals, so I appreciate their consistency and their attention to that, but they settled on some very good compromises, I guess you could say, to bring the rate down to an appropriate level, and maybe everyone walked away very pleased with the end product and recommendations.
So again, you'll see this on October 15th. You have quite a bit of reading material. If you have questions or any clarification, please let us know. We'll certainly reach out to Matt if need be, so thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Board policy.
So you have a lengthy list of items, the board policy updates. There's only one item, though, this evening for your consideration and recommendation, and that is Policy AC and a minor change in swapping the compliance officer role and the acting compliance officer position. So previously, Kristel Morgan in HR was listed as the compliance officer and then acting compliance officer, and your absence was Sarah Marriott. We're going to reverse those in place, the compliance officer as Sarah Marriott and then acting officer as Kristel Morgan. The remaining items there are in circulation with our district administration for review along with any suggestions to ensure alignment with our practice and processes. You'll see those later on in October. We just present the one item to you, Policy AC revision for your consideration.
Move the board to policy AC as updated.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, contracts.
6.4, then, a few contracts, purchases, and bids, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson to walk us through those.
Yes, we had two this month that we had to expedite or kind of rush forward. One was in relation to the Chilton Services Fund addendum for Project Hope. We needed to kind of meet a deadline there. I think that was updated to the board at the end of August. And then in addition, a contract agreement with Missouri School for the Deaf to support some students, and that too was provided in the Friday update just here recently. So if there's any questions.
Move the board approve the emergency contracts as presented.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That takes us to the Board of Education, legislation and advocacy. Comments? None? Okay. Upcoming dates? Big one is the annual conference in October. I wish they would find a date and stick to it. And then Denise has been kind enough to put every possible meeting date on here next year. Looks very daunting, but thank you for that. And then board remarks. Anyone have anything that they want to add for the good of the order?
I would like to note that if I read it correctly, we have five GYOT, the Royal Teachers. I think that's real progress, so impressed to see it.
Anything else? All right.
I move the board adjourned.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Stop.